And we're live.
Thank you, Kurt.
Are you, do you have the escrow just?
He should be here.
Is there a reading?
I think so. I hope so. You talked to Sam.
That's our message.
Waiting for Karen to hear us. All right, welcome everybody to the Tuesday, September 9th, 2025 Planning Board Meeting. Amanda, would you like to take a role, please?
Sure. We have Chairman Rob Fister.
President.
Member Lou Mosella.
Here.
Member Pete Pennelli.
Here.
Member Mark Del Bazo.
Here.
Lou, do you want to use the mic, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible in liberty and justice for all.
Have the members had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
From the White.
Make a motion except on minutes.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. First on the agenda tonight, we have Henchon Dairy.
Chairman, I have it confirmed that this project is located within the New York City D and P watershed. I work for D and P watershed. Out of my ethics board to be a member of this board, for it to be clear was I would have to excuse myself for any projects in the watershed. So I would be excusing myself.
All right, thank you. Hello. Good, how are you?
We're here to seek approval of essentially an existing as-built. So this is the existing site. I know many of you know where this is. This is the site of Eastern Hay. Because of a variety of reasons, this property never received site plan approval from the planning boards. We're essentially catching up paperwork to a site that has existed for decades. There are no changes to the proposed site plan. There's no additions to the building, modifications to the building, no changes to Ingress Egress, et cetera. So what we've provided to you is essentially an as-built of the existing site. As all of you know, there is a large building on the site that houses Eastern Hay Henchon Dairy. It's used for retail, for office, and for warehouse. We've identified this for footage on the plan. There is the existing single-family residence, which was Margaret Henchon's house, and then the garage that sits right behind it. As you all know, Ingress Egress off of Main Street and 22. And again, there's no modifications and so forth to the proposed plan. I'm sure your attorney can, you know, provide you some additional detail if we need to. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. I know there are some existing items that Karen was asking for. We did have a call with her today. Thank you for allowing that to occur. So we identified some outstanding items that we would respond to.
All right, Karen, you want to lead?
Sure. So the applicant provided to us some information about trucks on-site and their circulation, and also some information about drainage. Do you want to go over the trucking and the drainage responses?
Sure. Yeah, we'll provide a response, just to have it written, so it's on the record tonight. They're about, you know, it's hard to gauge because delivery vehicles vary, but delivery vehicles are somewhere between zero and 10 a day. The hours of operation are seven to five broadly, Monday through Saturday. I know they close early on Saturday, but just to kind of give a placeholder so you have a record of what we're presenting. In addition, there was a question about how the stormwater drains. So again, it's not forever. It just sheet flows off the site. I mean, you all know this site just as well as I do. So predominantly flows, you know, towards the parking area, but there aren't any storm drains or storm, you know, since and so forth on site.
And so we talked today during the call about the applicability of the urban regulations which apply to the site, and so we're going to clarify that in the bulk schedule. That's kind of a next step that we've got to do. Let's see. That's pretty much it. It's like she said, it's a retroactive approval establishing basically on record for the village what exists today on the site, and it lets us know what the operations are for current conditions. The idea is from here, we have a solid footing going forward. You know, life goes on and things change, right?
I have a question about the trucks. I understand that you, naturally, you don't know when they're going to come, and that's not a question for me. My question would be parking of the trucks and storing of the trucks. Do you plan on storing any of the trucks on-site?
No, there's actually a note on the plan, Lou, about that, so to indicate that there's no storage on-site.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure of that.
I got a problem with the drainage. Every time it rains, the dirt washes out onto that site on East Main Street, and I'm tired of cleaning my driveway out of dirt all the time.
Where do you live?
East Main Street. Comes right down the street.
Okay, all right. So all along to-
You've got a problem with drainage.
The town engineer. I haven't witnessed that. You know, I've been on that site-
This last rainstorm.
Many, many years.
And every time we get a rain, not a normal rain, but you get, start getting heavy rain, dirt starts moving and it comes out of that driveway.
I noticed that you did quite a bit of work up there recently with the entrance and exit onto 22. And can you tell me about the other work that you, that you just finished up on-site? Was there anything else?
That was, yeah, that was permitted by DOT.
Did you, did you have to do another apron on-site at all?
No.
Okay.
There was, originally, there was, in part of an agreement, as part of the CO, the Certificated Occupancy that was issued for this, there was a proposed apron that was supposed to be designed on the south end of the site, where the-
Right, right, right.
-lefty areas. And so the owner decided not to do that. So he withdrew that. That's not on the plans anymore. That's been taken off. And I think there were some concerns about storage. And I know you drove up on the site, and there were some questions about like storage of leftover hay and so forth, and that was all removed.
Yes, that was all taken care of.
Yep.
Okay, good.
There is a potential that the application may need a minimal variance from the urban regulations. The bulk table is going to help us determine whether or not they do need to go to the zoning board. But tonight, if the board would like to consider setting it down for a public hearing, it's at a good place to do that. It requires a public hearing by law because of the special use permit that's associated with the use. And you may also consider typing it for Seeger this evening.
And so in case it wasn't clear in my memo, we think this could be a type-two action based on the fact that there's no construction occurring as part of it. And Amanda, you circulated the application today to the county?
Do you make a motion for the type-two?
Yeah.
No, I'll make the motion.
What, you want the hearing?
Most of it type-two or the hearing first? What do you want to do?
I'd do the hearing first before you look type-two, right?
I don't think it matters.
Just make a difference. So I'll make the motion.
You need the hearing first or we need the type-two first?
Well, so Seeger, you are supposed to do it at the earliest moment that it's applicable in the application. You want to get that done early. But potentially, you could do both actions this evening. It doesn't matter which order you do that tonight.
Would you have a hear?
Let's do the hearing and the seeker at the same time.
We'll make a motion to have a public hearing?
Here.
What date would that be, Amanda? 14?
Have you got a second?
I'll second that.
Oh, you moved.
I moved it. He seconded it.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I get a motion to determine this type-two?
I'll make a motion that we have type-two. Type-two action.
All in favor, aye.
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 So with the public hearing noticing, Amanda, is that, that's their responsibility, right? And so you'll provide them the information?
Yeah, I'll have the labels and once I have the approval for it, I'll send it to you.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
So sometime by the end of next week, the advance notices, how many days do you-
Well, they have to set it out a week before, and I put it in the paper like 10 days prior.
Okay, so we'll try and get it.
You do the paper.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, and we'll do the legal.
Yep, okay, perfect. So we'll get it to you by the end of next week.
Your water runoff is at the end of the road coming out on East Main Street. Starts on, where the hill slopes down there. That's where all the dirt comes down, all the water runs out on, into East Main Street.
Okay, I'll look into it. Any comments and so forth from the board?
No, thank you.
Anything else?
Nothing.
Okay, all right.
So we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Arch Street.
Okay, we'll, we'll second call you, Kurt, if they come with a check. Okay, then my recommendation is to remove them from the agenda this evening because it's an incomplete application.
What happened?
No escrow has been submitted by the applicant.
He's definitely not coming.
What's that?
He's definitely not coming?
No. And I know Amanda did speak to Mrs. yesterday of the issues. I don't-
They're not ready for review?
I mean, it seems like from the review letter we did receive that it's a lot of housekeeping issues that we can sort through, so it doesn't seem to be too onerous. But thank you for the view.
Thanks for coming.
Well, I have the next one, too.
Welcome back.
Yes, thank you.
21 West Main Street.
All right. As you're all aware, we've been around this several times, different iterations on the proposed expansion to this, the building at 21 West Main. Basically, we're proposing to add a three-story addition to the west side of the property, all within the required setbacks of the B1 zone. We would have, on the first floor, we would be adding a small commercial area. We would be converting one of the tenants, commercial tenant spaces on the first floor, to a handicap-accessible apartment, and then we would be providing two additional apartments on the first and second floor, or the second and third floor of the addition. So right now, there's three apartments and two commercial spaces in the building, and we're proposing to add three apartments to the building. One would be in the existing, and then two would be in the addition. No increase in parking. It meets the requirements of parking. I think we submitted an analysis of the existing parking conditions there. We're well under what is provided. They're very rarely full, if ever. That's it in the nutshell.
Thank you.
I guess, could you just take us on a brief, like, background on how we got here today, right? So I'll help, I'll help. So, so we started with a project that had, the existing condition remained the same, right?
Yes.
You had essentially two commercial tenants and 1,000 square feet, and as an apartment on the, on the second and third floors, right?
Correct.
Okay. And you proposed the addition, but it was in the rear yard setback, and that got denied by the zoning board.
Correct.
Right, okay. Then we've had some various iterations where it's, that the addition has moved, but now we're at a place where the addition is in a location that preserves the parking in the same location with the exception of the handicap, sorry, the spots on the plan side all the way to the right, right?
Yes, so just, so you can see the, on the approved, the previously approved, the current site plan, the parking spaces over on the east side of the property are tucked in here, and sometimes they could double parking in there, one behind the other. So we're proposing to reclaim some green space on the parking here and pull these forwards and leave them all on the line.
Now, what does reclaiming the green space, I mean, other than obviously beautifying and, you know, decreasing impervious and all that good stuff, does it get you out of needing some sort of variance there?
Because our pre-existing non-conforming was, I think, close to 90% and more of impervious surface on the site. So by eliminating the shed cover off the south side of the building and replanning this paved area, it brings us into conformance with the required impervious-
Into conform, near, near to conform?
I think we're, I think we're right at.
Okay.
So.
You're under the maximum.
Yes, so we're okay. We're at 75. Maximum lot coverage is 75. We're at 75 with those changes. We were at 95.
Right, right. But if you remove the rear shed, you'll be improving the condition anyway, right?
Yes.
So I mean, my concern with those parking spaces moving is the same concern that we had with the prior iteration, when you moved the other parking spaces, right?
I mean, we're happy to leave them where they are.
Right, right. In this case, like, it's not ideal, but you're following my thinking here. Like, we, we're increasing something that shouldn't be. So I, I don't think it's really permissible to allow those parking spaces, those two parking spaces, to move closer to the road because they're, they're, they are existing non-conforming in their present condition where they don't actually have a drive aisle space, right? Like, they have to use the, those spaces today have to essentially use the part of the site, that little triangle that they have, or the road is their rear view. And by moving those two spaces closer to the road, we're worsening that, and that's inappropriate, and it doesn't abide by the zone in which requires drive aisle space of some way.
Even though it sounds like people-
Even though it sounds good.
Well, but they said they were double parking.
Right, true.
So people presumably were parking in those spaces close to the road anyway.
Oh, you think that's a loophole to, to help improve the impervious?
Well, I don't know if that's a loophole, but it's part of the consideration because you just put it on the record.
Well, it's-
Either, either way, I, I think we could work with it, either way. We're reduced, we're taking the shed off the back, so that reduces our pre-existing non-conforming-
Right.
-impervious coverage to below what it currently is. So that's decreasing that. So there's some mitigation there. We're happy to leave the parking spaces, those two parking spaces, where they are right now.
Yeah. So Sarah, let's, let's think about that.
Well, so, so the rule with the pre-existing non-conforming structures, you can't increase the non-conformity.
Correct.
So, as long as you're not-
Decreasing, so, yes.
So, I mean, it's obviously better for the site to increase the green space, but-
Kurt, can I see that one?
But, but now we're, right? So what do you think is the right thing to do from a legal standpoint? Or do you want to think about it?
I'm just saying legally, if they are continuing or even somewhat improving the, the pervious surface out there, then it's still-
Oh, you're taking it all together? Sorry, go ahead.
No, I mean, I'm more focused on what's going to-
I have a question.
Yes.
So the space is state is non-conforming grandfathered clause. This is how it should be. If they touch it, they got to do an improvement. We're concerned if they push it back, goes back to that whole issue of determining the end, right? With this, there's impervious, non-permeable surface replacing impervious surface, correct? What, what would happen if they did something like a grass paver here, left the spots where they were? It becomes pervious, imperv, I mean, becomes pervious, so it's, but they, the spots don't move? Does that affect the grandfather clause? So you hold for both, or also if they, they make their impervious coverage requirement because it's transferred to-
So retaining the parking while making it pervious surface?
Yes, it's a grass paver instead. But would that affect their grandfather clause? I would only suggest that it doesn't.
No, no. As, as long as they are not increasing the non-conformity, so if they're not increasing the impervious surface on the lot, it would not go against that clause.
Would that be something you would consider, Kurt?
Yes. So if that is a resolution that kind of makes everyone happy, then-
Well, what I heard was, your grandfather then move your parking. By doing that, you still maintain your grandfather clause. There's no issue.
Correct.
So that's up to you. If you want, if you want to move it, then you have to go to the zoning board.
But to make that work, there could be no double parking there.
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine. I think that was just a function of people parking there, but that's fine.
Right. So how are you going to prevent it?
I'm sure, yeah, for signage and, yeah.
It should also be a note on the plan.
That's, that's absolutely fine.
Could you talk us through the parking analysis or observations? Meaning like the counts from the three days?
Yeah, so basically, I think we had three days that we looked at parking on the site. I think there was two weekend, weekdays and a weekend day. Looked at it basically from morning through late afternoon, early evening for the parking. And I think at maximum, at any given time, there was four parking spaces occupied there. So there is kind of a offset with consideration of shared parking. We, we meet the requirements of the village guidelines for parking requirements for the uses here. So we're required to have eight based on the apartments and the bedroom count and, or the apartments and the commercial uses. So we meet that requirement. So we have eight parking spaces. So theoretically, overnight, you get the residential people parking there. During the day, typically, you'll get majority of those residential people going off-site and the commercial people using the site. So that's why I think the numbers are somewhat lower.
I'd like to comment on that myself. I think there was a discussion about, at one particular meeting, that the lot was full. So I took it upon myself, I, I took an analysis for eight days. From 10 o'clock, 9:30, 10 o'clock, to, I have military time, because it's 6:30. And the most cars I ever got is, is four as well. Majority of the time, there was two, or actually, I'm sorry, one day there was five cars at 3:00 in the afternoon. One car, five cars, four cars, two, four. So it's, the site is never full.
There was two there now when I came by.
Yeah, the site, the site is never full. And I go, and I go, and I go by quite, quite a bit.
Well, you're also the parking.
I also like to keep my, I like to-
But I mean, you're aware of these things as you drive around the village.
I'm very aware, yes. And I also took the liberty to go, to go one step further. I have 11 photos here of, of other driveways within the village that people have to back out on, too. There's a couple on West Main Street that are actually worse than, than this particular site. So it might not be the ideal situation, but there are other sites in other driveways in the village where people have to back out onto Spring Street, West Main Street.
And I know we have zoning regulations, too, that require the driving out, but basically, it's the same scenario as kind of Charles Coman Boulevard. You're parking along the sidewalk and backing into the driving out.
Right, and it happens on every street within the village. So I'll submit that for the record as well.
Karen, did that answer your question?
Yeah, oh yeah, I just wanted to put it out there.
Can we go through this review comment?
Sure.
I don't, can you explain the first comment regarding the apartment where it says three additional spots? Is that based on, because our code is kind of written for a family shared car?
No, this was like simple.
And most families now have husband and wives, and they both have their own car? Is that where that's coming from?
It was purely simplistic based on the fact that they had, they have, how many dwelling units do you have right now?
There's three now.
There's three now.
And there'll be six.
And there'll be six, so, you know.
And that's in the code, too, the parking requirements in the village codes.
If, in general, we had four, four spaces on a regular basis, you know, we can assume at least, you know, that some, three of those were, there's three residents. And so just doubling that for the additional apartments.
And per the village requirements, it's one parking space per apartment. So it meets the requirements of that.
The code's written with a family car. Now, husband and wives have their own-
One parking space per apartment.
So that's just, I mean, that's what it is. I'm not changing the code, but that's what it is.
Well, and they are, they're one-bedroom apartments, right? So the standard from a transportation engineering standpoint is not two spaces per dwelling unit for apartments. It's less than that.
I disagree, but that's fine.
I, I just mean from the ITE.
But again, the code is one. That's, that's the question.
Yes, that's what the village has in its zoning regulations.
Okay. So anyway, the planning board is considering a parking waiver, essentially. They're not proposing any parking, right? And they're proposing three new dwelling units. Oh, sorry, no parking waiver. That's all right.
No, we're, we're in compliance with the zoning rules. So I don't think a waiver's required. It meets the requirements of the zone for parking spaces.
Okay, sorry, pause for a moment. In fact, in the B1 district, the planning board can decide whatever parking they want for a site. That was a local law passed in like 2014 or some, 2018, something like that. It used to be that they could waive up to 10%, but that's no longer the case. So in fact, they could require parking for these additional dwelling units and the additional commercial space. So I phrased it as a waiver, but in fact, it's not a waiver. It's purely at their discretion. So there you have it. It's pure- It's purely at your discretion, and you should consider the information that's been provided to you about the parking supply versus the parking demand. And, you know, consider whether you think it's reasonable that they're not providing parking. So, that's number one. Number two is that you guys require a special use permit for the ground floor apartment, right? Which you'd said, and you provide that rationale in a prior...
Yes, and it is handicapped accessible, so that...
So, the, I think some of the findings for that special use permit were increasing accessible units, right?
Correct.
And trying to understand whether it would have some, by having a ground floor apartment facing the street, it was going to kind of lessen the mixed-use commercial character of the district, right?
Right, and it cannot face the street, actually, so that's why there's a hallway that keeps that to the rear of the building, so...
Okay, okay. I, I think the numbers that you had for water demand and wastewater generation were slightly off. It's 110 per bedroom.
Correct, yeah.
Width of the sidewalk adjoining the front of the building in the current condition versus the proposed condition? So, I noticed that the width of the sidewalk decreases next to the...
Yeah, it's five, it's five feet along the commercial space here, and then it's three feet along here. But there is also access on the internal corridor to that commercial space. So, it's, yeah, it's five feet along the face of the building here, and it does diminish here to a three-foot sidewalk.
Okay, and so, where is the accessible unit?
Uh, back here.
Okay, so they use, they would use the five-foot wide?
Right here, and then the parking spaces are here. So, come on the five-foot sidewalk, which meets ADA requirements, coming here with the unit.
So, I, I don't think our code specifies a width for sidewalks, I have not.
It does, but ADA does, because of the way that the doors swing and stuff, so it doesn't need that requirement. Actually, it's easier.
The columns, it seemed like in the front...
Yeah, that was an error, there's one.
I kept looking at it.
It's been removed, so there's two, one on each end of the proposed addition.
So, the cars parking in between those two columns? What, what are, how are the columns protected from?
We'll put two ballards, one or two ballards in front of the corners, and concrete-filled ballards to protect those.
See, we already talked about the two parking spaces. The lighting that you proposed, is there a lower Kelvin option?
Pick a number, we'll meet it.
Twenty-eight hundred is the number we go for.
Okay. And those are all located basically in the soffit of the building, so basically, they shone right down.
So, I guess the only other thing I would say is that with the columns, you might have a little bit more maneuvering, you know, with people trying to get themselves in there. I say that based on my experience with, a, a family has residence on 86th Street, and they have a garage in the basement in the city. And their spot is right next to a column.
Okay.
And it is tight.
Yep.
You know, it is tight, so...
We have a couple feet on either side of the actual parking space to the face of the column. So, we have the parking space plus a couple feet attached to it.
Mm-hmm, yep, okay. I mean, I do think there will be additional maneuvering, but, you know, it is just something to consider. And so, that, that, the, the columns allow the second and third story to cantilever over, providing a little bit more size.
Correct.
Yeah, do I have any more comments? Got four eyes. Heard the public hearing is open right now for this application. Do we have anybody who would like to speak? If you do, please announce your name.
Hello, planning board members, I'm Nicholas Worleif. I happen to be on the zoning board of appeals, but today, I am here as one of the other concerned villagers regarding this project. I've done a lot of research because of my position on the zoning board of appeals. But again, I'm only here as a citizen to talk about some of the information that I have and hopefully enhance the discussion tonight, bring up some points that may be of concern and maybe need some more discussion. One of the things that I discussed previously in one of our meetings was that some of the things written in the comprehensive plan are very specific about how structures should fit. And actually, I think that this planning board has been very historically good about making sure that projects are adjusted so that they fit architecturally with what's around. Lou, I know you have expertise in plantings, and you're often very involved not only in where planting should be for beautification, but also the very species. I appreciate your knowledge with all of that. One of the things that I notice about this particular project is it doesn't really fit architecturally or characteristically with the neighborhood. Some of the very language from the appalling comprehensive plan code says that not only are the buildings important, but equally as important are the settings of these structures. The yards, the gardens, the hillsides, the vistas contain and give shape to the village and its character. There is nothing else like that particular building on East or West Main Street, and even on some of the other main streets in town. The only other cantilevered architectural design is a building on Arch Street that happens to be owned by the current applicant. So, it is a very unusual design and, and structure for that specific space. I know that, I'm gonna hop around a little bit, my notes aren't superially organized like when I'm sitting on that side of the table. I know that these guys are gonna have some wheelchair access, some ADA compliant things. That's great. I do have a concern, though, about some of the patterns that I see at one of the other properties owned by this applicant, specifically on Arch Street. There is a wheelchair-accessible space. Every time I drive by that space on Arch Street, there is a car parked. It's not actually in the handicap space, it's in the blue hash-marked space next to it, which would be needed for somebody to egress their vehicle and get into a chair. Literally, almost every time. There's a pickup truck there, today, I think there was a Volkswagen, there's some white small car. That space is never accessible for ADA compliance. I don't know, I, I think that the ADA compliance should be taken more seriously, apparently because that's not on a public parking space, it's not enforceable. However, I think that that should be considered very seriously. If you're gonna have an ADA-compliant space, I think that you need to actually make it accessible. Let's see here. Apparently, there are some regulations, and I was looking at this particular plan, there are regulations about natural light entering certain dwellings. It appears that one of the, one of the apartments, it might be the one on the ground floor, has only natural light able to enter through the entryway door. And there is a minimum requirement, apparently, of 8% of the space has to be window space for natural light to come in. I don't know even if that door was an entire glass door, top to bottom, left and right, if that would meet the 8%, but I think that that's something that the planning board should think about, discuss. Because it seems that that apartment would kind of be like living in a tunnel with a, with a light at one end only. I think it's the only window space in that whole apartment. I know that there are parking issues with properties that this particular applicant has. I know that the building across the street where the barber shop is presently housed, I don't believe there is any parking being supplied by the applicant for those, for those tenants. And in fact, there apparently are issues with them parking on the Dutcher House property, and the Dutcher House is having trouble with that because those spaces aren't being paid for by the current applicant as part of renting those spaces. So, there's a big parking issue with that. I know from one of our meetings as, as on the, on the zoning board that there are issues with snow removals, snow actually being moved from the current address, 21 West Main, that we're discussing tonight, onto Judy Pisano's property next door, where she's had to have people come in and replow. I know that there are issues with garbage there. I drive by there all the time, I live down the street. The garbage can's supposed to be hidden from view. I drove by there a while back, there was a garbage can laying on its side, ripped open and trashed all over the lot for two days. So, it appears that some very minimal things that should be attended to are not being attended to. Mark, I completely agree with your assessment of the parking. I think that although the codes say that not as much parking is needed as might be required, I think that it needs to be updated. And in fact, I want to remind the, the, the planning board of a parking issue that came up with a project at the end of East Main Street years ago, the restaurant project. I was on the zoning board back then, and it came before us as well. We were told by their analysis that there would be plenty of parking for that restaurant. In fact, at the time, I think that that applicant was considering running the restaurant, and they were going to shuttle people down to what's now Hudson Valley Plastics, another property that they own. While I think that their minds changed about who's gonna run the restaurant, right now, they want to be a landlord and rent that. And I think that the rent, from what I've heard, the rents are so high there that it makes it very difficult mathematically for the amount of spaces there to work. Now, you guys approved that design as the zoning board, we approved it too. I was probably one of the sticklers about counting it up. I figured that there needed to be three people in each car that arrived. My point here is, though, that an applicant's analysis of parking really should be looked at closely with a common sense view from the rest of us. And in, in my view, and again, this is as a villager and a citizen of this village, it seems to me that if you've got six apartments, you should have a space for every apartment, that means six. If you have three businesses, you should have a space for every one of those business owners to park there. That, to me, is three more, that's nine. And don't those businesses want people to come in, park a car, and spend some money? If you have one person in each business, then that means you need 12 spaces. And if you don't have all those spaces, then you've got a business that doesn't have people coming back anymore. Then you have vacant spaces. Then you have something like a restaurant at the end of the road, where there's never gonna be enough parking to support the rent. So, I think it's a big concern. Mark, I completely agree with you. I think that our codes about parking need to be revised. I think we need to consider this as a really strong and important point moving forward. Because if there isn't enough parking, and around there, there's not enough street parking either for all the businesses that are in that area, then it's going to end up meaning that there's gonna be vacant spaces and businesses that fail and a constant rotation of what's gonna be able to work there. I think that may be all my notes. I think that may be about it. Thank you for your time tonight. Thank you for accepting my little bit of rambling, because my notes were kind of all over the place on this. When I'm on that side of the table, I do a lot more preparation, but tonight was kind of a much quicker procedure for me. Anyhow, thank you very much. Is there anything else that would like to speak?
I don't know if you can hear me, Judy Pisano? This is, okay. My name is Judy Pisano, and I'm here with my family. We own the house next door to 21 West Main Street, which is what this, this meeting is all about. I have, I have a number of concerns, but I had some questions, too. I wanted to find out if ever a, a survey has been redone. Because I brought this up, this is probably the third time that I've mentioned about the encroachments. So, has a new survey ever been done for this property since 2008? And, and the encroachments became a known fact? Do we know?
So, no, I believe that currently, this project relies on 2008 survey.
So, there's no new, new survey? So, and I, I have mine, and I bought, this is the third time that I've bought it. But I'm, I don't want to bore you with the paperwork. But there is an encroachment on the, the west side and also on the south side. And I have a question as far as the setback, because the encroachment is either, most of the wall or all of the wall is on the church's property. So, so when, when the site plan was done, I'm wondering where the measurement was taken from? Was it taken with the assumption that the wall is on the applicant's property? Because it's not. So, that's a question, I think, maybe, maybe for the architect?
Well, if, if you don't mind, I'll just say that the, the existing building isn't moving. So, regardless of where it's measured from, it's already, it already does not comply, right? With the oning. And so...
It doesn't comply already with the oning?
Right. So, even if they measured it incorrectly, it doesn't make a difference. But I will say that when it comes to encroachments, I think from a legal standpoint, that's not something that the village planning board can get involved in, correct?
No, that would be a private civil matter. You would speak to your own counsel about whether or not there is an encroachment.
Does that mean that you could go forward with the project, even knowing that, that this has been brought out, that there's encroachments?
Can the board move forward with...
With, with an approval, without having done a resurvey, I would think, on the part of the applicant?
I, I mean, that's in the discretion of the board. I mean, I don't know that there's been a record created showing encroachments. I don't think we've seen any documentation to the effect.
Well, there was, this was brought up at the zoning board meeting, and also at the 2022 original site plan. And I bought the survey and showing a letter from the attorney. That was the, the planning board, and everybody got a copy of that, showing that. So, there is a, there is a record of that being established publicly.
I, I meant for this application, yeah.
Yeah, so, so there was, there was that, that concern.
Sorry, Judy, do you mind, you said there's an encroachment on the rear property line, and then on the west property line?
On my side. But the stone wall is over, is, is on, partially on my property, and almost all of it is on the church property.
And when was that stone wall installed?
2000, and I think it was eight or nine, I think eight, yeah, because the, the building went up after that. So, the, so there are other issues. The garbage conditions have been, have been really kind of messy. And the encroachments I've mentioned. So, what I have, I, I, I'm bringing back the pictures that I brought to the zoning meeting, because we're talking about parking and congestion. And I, I think that there should be a traffic study done. Because it's a dangerous situation there, the bottleneck is, is very difficult. And I think I, Amanda, I think I'm gonna pass this around. Let me see. Whoops.
You may as well take this one, too.
Hold on, that happened. So, there's that. And then, another issue that I had brought forward about snowplow. There's, there's no, there's no place to put the snow over there. There is no place, except when it's pushed on my driveway. And, and I have pictures of that, so... So, that should be a consideration, the maintenance. How do you, how do you maintain property that there's no place to put the snow? And, and those pictures that I'm showing, there, there's a parking, there's, there's a, parking lot was completely full of cars. The tractor trailer was on a different day that was coming towards me as I was leaving my property, with, with three cars on the other side, on the barber shop side. And there's only supposed to be room for one car there, one compact car. And there's a truck... a truck and I think two other vehicles, you can clearly see that. It's dangerous. And I can't understand with the, a picture like that with a parking lot being so full and seeing the congestion there. In fact, the congestion at that intersection is serious enough that one of my tenants is here tonight, he was hit by a car there crossing between Dutcher Avenue at the corner of West Main Street. He was hit by a car and he was dragged to the quick side. That was a year and a half ago. And it was because of the, all the cars that had been parked there on Dutcher Avenue and I think that a traffic study should be taken no matter what happens here tonight. I think that that makes sense. So, yeah, there's a number of things, but I think the big focus here tonight is more the size of the lot and now adding two more apartments and another commercial spot. It seems to me that if you have a commercial spot, you will have a patron, you know, and now we're adding another commercial spot. So to me, that's allowing for at least a couple more parking spaces that should be there. It can be very congested, sometimes more than other, but I think of emergency vehicles trying to get in. And there's some other things, but I'm going to stick to the parking because I think that that's really the main issue here. And I think the way the parking will be now, that some of those cars will be pretty close to the road, they will be parked pretty close to the road. And it's such a hazard, the pictures are trying to show that that area, you know what, Amanda, why don't you pass this around to, this is part of the parking that goes around in that congested area that we're just adding to the congestion with two more apartments and another commercial spot. I would have thought that there would have been provision for commercial parking, that there'd be patron parking. And that just seems so logical. I can have a business and not have people coming in. And the snow removal, you know, that, and I even talked to the applicant about it, but that picture is from not this past year because this past year, we didn't have the kind of snow that we had the year before, we were lucky, it was like two inches every now and then. And I think that that place was over cleaned out. The snow just stayed there. So, and it's hard to maintain it even when there are the little cars there, no place to go. So I think that that's probably, I want to sum it up, that's about all I want to say, is really the parking and the bottleneck. And that tractor trailer, I think, speaks a thousand words. That's it. I don't think I want to talk about it anymore. There are some other issues I think that we've taken care of in time without going to the board. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Judy said something that reminded me of one that I missed, so if you don't mind, could I come up again to address the board?
Sure, state your name again, please.
Nicholas Warley, Village resident and happened to be also a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, but here only as a Village citizen today. One of the things that I forgot to bring up was part of the history of how this property got to where it is, and I'll try to be brief, but Rob Lifland had owned this property a while back. He expanded the property, it was a single-story structure when he purchased it. He brought it up two more levels, two and a half stories technically, but three usable stories. He had some other things done as well and honestly, he should have come before the Zoning Board of Appeals. But he was mayor, Lifland was mayor at the time, and what he did after the fact, after all the construction was done, was he went to the then members of the Planning Board, I don't think anybody who's currently on the board now, that was then, and he asked them to approve the project after the fact. There were some very strict regulations though, that he got around to doing that. And one of them is, in the zoning issues that he had, there were limits that the zoning board would have been only able to increase the size of that structure by about 20 percent. These rules were obviously in place so that the zoning board can't just go rogue and just have an unlimited addition to non-conforming structures. Where uplifted at the time, increased the size of this building by two more levels from a single level. By some estimates, I would say about a 200 percent increase rather than a 20 percent increase in the building, 10 times more than what it allowed. These regulations are in place, these zoning codes are in place, to limit the size of structures on certain lots so that they aren't too crowded, too overcrowded, too packed. Although the current applicant is not asking for anything that requires a zoning variance, they are asking for a much, a pretty large addition to the current lot coverage with the building. Had this gone through the proper channels back in 2008 with Rob Lifland, they would probably not have been a two-story, two stories added because we wouldn't have even been allowed by the code. It's not even something that the zoning board could have chosen should they want it to because there's a hard line that is not of our discretion. So I just wanted to bring that up, that the current building is twice as large, 200 percent larger than we would have been allowed to allow. And what's being asked now is for even more structure on that same small lot. That was one note, Judy had mentioned something that reminded me of that point, I think it's a pretty important point as far as density of coverage. And thank you once again for hearing me and for letting me come back.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Can I address a couple of those issues? In terms of what Nicholas just mentioned, I believe in the zoning code, the 20 percent maximum is for non-conforming uses, not non-conforming structures. This is a conforming use. This is a mixed-use building in the B1 zone which is permitted as a break. So we're not increasing it beyond that. Dimensionally, it didn't meet the requirements, it's pre-existing non-conforming, but the use is compliant, so I don't think that that issue makes, it's pertinent here. In terms of...
Kurt, are you saying, again, I'm just looking at this, the 1640 foot square foot, is that a percent, what roughly, what is the percent increase?
It really doesn't apply to this, the use is permitted, so there is no limitation in this. We meet the requirements of the zoning regulations for this site.
Yeah, the code places certain limitations on non-conforming uses versus non-conforming structures. It appears that the only explicit condition put on, or limitation put on non-conforming structures, which is what this property has, is that it cannot be more non-conforming. There's a limit of an expansion which results in a 20 percent increase in assessed value of a property for a non-conforming use. Here the use conforms.
This is conforming, okay, go ahead.
Okay, just going through a couple of issues. The light and vent issue in the one apartment on the first floor, there's a set of French doors in that unit open to the back open space which exceeds the requirements for light and vent, and that is a building code issue that needs to be complied with, but it does meet the requirements of light and vent for the structure and the size of that apartment. So that should not be an issue.
Sorry, I'll just echo that that is a building code issue, that's not under the, do you agree Sarah, that's not...
It's not under the zoning code.
Yeah, it's not under the perjury of the Planning Board, how about...
And just for clarification, we're not adding a commercial space, we're actually converting the, one of the existing commercial spaces to the accessible apartment. And the new commercial space in the addition is much smaller than the existing commercial space that will be converted. So the commercial ratio on the site is much less than what it is currently used as because there's two in there. And, you know, we don't know what the tenants are of these things, but right now, it's a one-person medical office, we'll say, and I think the space of the new commercial use is very limited, it's going to probably be an office for somebody that may or may not have a patron coming in there. In terms of the garbage issue that was mentioned, the applicant has mentioned that they had a bad raccoon problem when they had just the cans out there, so they've actually put the cans into a, into plastic garbage sheds within the past three, four months, so that should keep the animals out of there. So I guess that was the issue with the garbage sitting there. And we will be using that, it's actually going to be moving, the garbage spaces are going to be moving further away from the west side of the property. That intersection there, Dutcher Avenue, West Main Street, was actually redone, I don't know, in the past 10 years by the county DRT. So I assume a traffic study was done at that point to create what was done there. So whether or not there's people parking where they shouldn't on the street, I can't answer that, but that was something that was done recently in that reconfiguration of that intersection. In terms of the snow removal, and Mark, to your point and what our discussion was when we started, was these spaces here, currently snow is, we can store some in here, but pulling those forward to the road basically allows more snow storage space on the site. That was just one of the things that we were thinking about there. And just to clarify, where these parking spaces are, are not going any closer to the road. The back of those spaces is where they are now. We're not going any closer to the road than they currently are.
I don't understand that, I'm sorry.
I think Judy was mentioning that moving the spaces closer to the road, these spaces are not moving closer to the road, the back of those spaces are where they are now, we're not going closer to the road.
Except for the two, right?
Yeah, wherever that lands, I mean, if the...
Oh, I see, I'm following your line, it's not passing into the road.
Judy was saying, we were moving parking spaces closer to the road, this, the back end of this is not moving any closer to the road, depending on what the resolution is of those two spots, but those spaces are existing for majority.
Anybody else?
She wants to speak again.
State your name again, please.
Judy Pisano. I think, I understood Kurt to say that you can move the snow back, right, pull it back into the road?
No.
No.
On the east side of the property. Here, you're here. Snow can be stored there.
The snow can be stored there?
Well, it just can't be stored there.
But how will they get the snow past the parking spots to get over here?
Well, you have to shovel the spots. You have to have people move their cars and typically like any parking lot. You have to have people move and shovel it and get it in their spot.
Okay. But I do have one other question and it has to do with, Sarah, Judy, can we ask that people can hear? Okay, no, the other thing that I didn't mention before, but I'd like to mention it now, there are some issues, right, and if this is not the right time and place, you can tell me about some signs. There's a sign facing my property, which is, and in the signage rules, that sign cannot face a property, even if it's commercial, if it's residential in nature. And that sign should have never been put up, and it is an eyesore on my side. And the other thing is that the original site plan had a gate and the gate was there to conceal the storage or the trash or whatever they wanted to store there. Well, I thought that once you had gotten approval on the existing situation with the gate, that you can, you really have to get permission to take it down and remove it because what went in its place is a roll-off trailer that sits there that says United Van Lines. It's got big advertising stuff on it. And there's no provision for that. In the site plan for 2022, all the parking spaces were marked off, the back was for storage, and there's nothing that permits a trailer to be parked on that property. And I think that should be addressed. I think that seems to me that it's a violation to be able to do that. In the town, the rule is that you can only park a trailer for seven days for loading and unloading. The village is more vague about it, but you still would, you would imagine that they would have to have some kind of a permission or there should have been something in a site plan to allow something of that size to be in there. So, okay, I think I'm done now. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So just one more thing, just to clarify on that, in the storage area, the approved storage area on the previous site plan, it's like a shipping container, it's not a trailer on wheels, it's being stored there on site and it will be removed with it, so it goes away. So, just to clarify that.
Could you, sorry, could you clarify the refuse under the current proposed condition?
I believe the curtain, the garbage cans over here that are stored and pulled out to the road, when they're picked up, we're actually going to be storing them here in a fenced area here and the garbage enclosures will be pulled out when they're collected on Mondays. Pardon me, which?
Thank you.
There's a couple of things that I'd like to address, and I have notes all over the place too, so bear with me if I jump around. As far as the building goes, what Rob Lifland did and what the applicant is doing right now is day and night as far as I'm concerned, I think the building is a far better fit to the neighborhood than it was previously. Now let's not forget what the neighborhood is, it's downtown village, we have a church, we have, I'll call it the bank across the street, it was a bank back in the day, we have a commercial building across the street, we have a gas station. So I would say personally, it fits into the neighborhood. And a lot of things were brought up this evening that actually should be brought up to different boards, I would say the Village Board. And I agree with Mrs. Pisano that that is a bad spot when you're going west, on West Main Street, past the barber shop and there are a couple of cars parked there, you do have to go into the eastbound lane. As a matter of fact, I took it upon myself not long ago when I stopped into the barber shop and I said, "Don't be surprised if one day we're going to eliminate these two spots in front of your building to make this safer." So that's a possibility and that should be brought up to the Village Board, that's nothing that the Planning Board can do. But I would say those two spaces should be eliminated. As far as the parking on Dutcher Avenue, that's got nothing to do with the applicant, but if there is one particular spot on the north side of the east part of Dutcher Avenue where there's no parking from here to the corner, cars that park there get ticketed all the time. I know, I give them the ticket. But we don't have a 24-hour-a-day parking enforcement officer. So whenever there's a car illegally parked anyplace in the village, they get a summons. So that, as far as the handicap, you bring up another good point Nicholas, on Arch Street, which has got nothing to do with 21 West Main Street, which is something that should be brought up to a different board. I'll follow up on that, I'll speak to the attorney, if it's on private property, if I'm allowed to give that, if the parking enforcement officer can ticket those, I'll touch base with you later, I'll enforce that. That means I'll have to enforce CVS parking as well, that's private property, because if I'm going to do it for one particular... And if... Because if I'm going to do it for one particular piece of property, I'm going to do it for all the properties. So you and I can discuss that.
We'll talk outside of the meeting.
Exactly.
There's certain...
So, right. So I'm not saying that Nicholas is wrong, but, you know, we have to call a spade a spade. We have to treat people equally. As far as the parking, again, I'll address it. I've backed in and out of 21 West... To be fair. Because I know parking is an issue, and I know it's a concern. I parked in 21 East Main Street in a number of different places, and I backed out onto West Main Street. You have to be careful. You know, when you're coming east on West Main Street, you actually have to slow down a little bit because the road curves when you're coming up the hill. It's not that you're going straight on West Main Street and you're going to zoom by 21 West Main Street. You have to be careful. It can be done. Of course, it can be done. And this is why I took the liberty of taking pictures of other homes on West Main Street who, quite frankly, have a more dangerous situation of backing out onto West Main Street. So yes, there are concerns, but I don't... For me, I think the... As far as the supply and demand goes, I think there's plenty of parking to meet the demand. I think the building fits into the character of the neighborhood. And if there's anything else, we can, you know... Karen, you can... We can discuss it. But I'd like to see this project move forward.
No, I think everybody's... The parking seems to be the biggest issue here, but the parking was already there. I mean, we didn't approve a site plan when this building was first put there with the parking because it wouldn't have been there. You're not supposed to park in the front yard in the B1. So they tried to keep all the parking in the rear. But you kind of made a good point, like if it's out in front of the Dutcher house, you're basically parking in the front and you're backing out. So that... Well, yeah, but again, they're not changing the parking. I mean, it's like what Mark was saying. If they're able to get those impervious surfaces for that parking on that side and not have to move those parking spaces, it's parking basically staying the same as it was previously approved. Really just looking at that addition. Yeah, I mean, that's... And it's within zoning. Like they're complying with, you know, the regulations that zoning allows.
Is there anybody else that'd like to speak? Not to make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Sorry, I'll just say the board could close the public hearing tonight. That is an option that the board can do. You can also keep the public hearing open, or you can keep it open limited to written comments. You have several options that you can do while you consider what you heard here tonight. And just a reminder, once you do close the public hearing, you have 62 days to render your decision.
I have a question. Maybe Kurt could answer. Kurt? So not regarding... Just, I didn't really pick up on this before, but the existing survey. So there's not meets and bounds. You have the proposed site plan on here. There's been a question I just heard, which I meant clearly, too, but potentially the existing conditions is built either over or on the property line. I'm assuming there is for the wall here that's shown leased on the west side. There's no maintenance easement agreement to do any repairs if they had to back there. But they could do all the repairs from the proposed green area.
Yes.
They have a limited tight space, but they have a proposed sidewalk. They could do repairs if they had to. Again, my assumption is the wall that was constructed back in, I'll say it was 2008. I don't remember exactly which was said, is either on or the majority is on this property?
Yeah, it looks like...
Because, again, there's no meets and bounds shown on this survey.
There was a record survey done. It was on file. It's in the private file, I believe.
And that contains the wall improvement?
Well, it's a meets and... Yeah, it was a survey that was based...
Property.
Used for the last amendment site plan and this one.
But this existing wall that's there...
Yes.
It's shown, at least from my observance...
It looks like...
It's on the property basically completely. Is it over?
It looks like maybe, as you go to the south, it looks like alive. But again, it's a stone wall, so there is some variation with that. So that's where it falls. And then on the south side, it looks like the wall is mostly right on the property line as well.
And again, there isn't a... I'm assuming, and you can correct me, because, you know, there's no maintenance agreement. But they basically, they have the proposed green area to do... Where previously they were going to go further back with the floor space. Now they have green space that they can work on the wall.
Yeah.
So they don't have to go, I mean, it'll be difficult, but they...
And that wall, I'm not sure, the southerly wall, I'm not sure when that was built because that actually forms like a retaining wall for the parking in the church is higher than the back land of the subject property.
Just a thing about that wall and the fence, and specifically the maintenance. Back in 2021 or 2022, when we originally purchased the property and we were in front of the planning board, this specific issue was brought up. And at the time, I was unaware of the exact line of survey. I've since have not gotten another survey because we haven't done anything where it would need it. But I believe the question was brought up was it's a question of a fence being damaged or something being damaged on that area, what would happen? And I believe some of the planning board members were on that, at that meeting, when I said I would take care of it. Since then, and if you speak to the person that runs the church, they would tell you, I've replaced the entire back fence, excuse me, back vinyl fence for the church because one of the church parishioners or people attending the church have nothing to do with me pulled too far forward, pulled over their parking curb and hit the fence. The fence fell forward and fell into my storage area, we'll call it. Damaged multiple sections of it. They didn't know what to do. They want to put a two-by-four up. I took it by myself, removed the entire back length of the fence and extended it even farther for them. This can all be verified by them. And Mrs. Pisano's property, several pieces of the vinyl fence have been damaged. Again, the fence sits much higher than a parking. I don't know who damaged them. Maybe it was the end of mine. Maybe it was the end of hers. I don't know. I've had it fixed. There was a report made to the village. The building inspector wrote me a letter, said, "I need to maintain the fence." It's a question of whose fence is it? Is it my fence? Is it her fence? Is it the church's? I have no idea. But either way, at my expense, I fixed it all. So currently, as it sits now, whether that stone wall built 20 years ago is an inch on Mrs. Pisano's property, a foot, all on my... That I'm unaware of. That was not my doing at all. But since I purchased the property, I've maintained all of it at my expense with nothing from the church and nothing from Mrs. Pisano to contribute to that. So I just want to be that very clear that I didn't create this wall encroachment if it exists or if it doesn't exist, but I am in fact taking care of it, and I have to. So just wanted to clarify.
Two quick questions?
Yes.
So what you're saying basically is the fence is on your property, basically, as your understanding.
To my knowledge, they're just the property.
And two, you can work on that fence without leaving your property?
Easily.
Okay.
Easily.
And to clarify, too, there's a stone wall, and then there's a vinyl fence that sits on top of that wall essentially.
And there's, from what I can see here with all the green space and the proposed sidewalk on the west side, you can work on the wall or the fence...
Yes.
Without leaving this property.
Correct.
Any more to close the meeting?
I did. With the market, you have something? No, I mean, of the option sheets, I would prefer if we left open a short period of time for written because people are probably listening. They might want to write a comment that Kurt then could address, but then close it after that period. That's what I suggest.
So you would just have to provide a date certain? That could be the next meeting date. People can submit written comments up until the date, or you can pick a date prior to that. It's up to the board.
Mark, are you sure I did what you're like? What's the next submittal date for your application? Yeah, we haven't closed the public conference still open.
Hi, Suzanne Pisano. I'm Judy's daughter. Just to clarify about the survey, we have conflicting surveys. Their survey does not match my mom's survey. This survey shows what part of the wall is on her property and the church property. I don't know why the surveys conflict. I don't know that it's really that relevant, but I just want to clarify there's a difference in the surveys. And, yeah, the wall is like, you know, that big, and the fence is that big. The fence, the fence is probably all on the right property. And Sean has repaired it, although it took a while, a couple of months maybe, but he's done it.
When was the survey taken?
When was that survey? 2008?
2008.
Kurt, have you ever seen the survey?
I've seen 2009.
My question is, this has nothing to do with our application. Nothing.
I mean, the only... My only thing of the existing survey is potentially there's setback distances, but I don't know if overall it would matter.
So there's no required...
Like, say that's a three-foot wide sidewalk and...
There's no required setbacks in the B1 district. But I guess the question is, how far is your addition built, set to be built off the western property line?
Right. You're coming off the wall this way.
It's a fire code issue and five feet on the zoning issue.
Yeah, I just wanted you to be aware, there's a different survey that says something different. That's all.
I'm just not sure what the difference is.
But I think the most important thing is, is where is your...
Yours on us.
Yeah.
So the wall and the wall in there are basically the same as the show on our site plan. And the wall goes this way, and it's not different.
How far off is the building from the west side?
From the west.
Your proposed addition.
21.5, is that it? That's the overhang?
No, this is... It's basically to the face, to the face of the wall. So it's probably two feet off the wall.
Two feet off. What's the width of the wall?
It probably... I'm going to say it's about two feet, maybe 18 to 24 inches wide. But it matches that, it looks like.
I honestly, I couldn't tell you if it matches or it doesn't match. What I would suggest, sorry, is that it... Maybe you ask your surveyor to compare the two and tell us what the difference is. If the building is set to be two feet off the western wall and the difference is less than two feet, then the encroachment is not affecting the addition.
Correct.
It directly. It's still an issue, and I understand that, but...
It just looks like the wall is drawn on that survey as a series of bubbles that typically signify a stone wall, and then...
I think the biggest encroachment in this movie on the backside.
Okay. But they're not...
The wall is on the church.
But they're not building anything on the backside. So in terms of its, like, direct pertinence to this application, it's not directly pertinent to that.
Okay.
But your point is a...
It doesn't affect any setbacks at all.
There's no setbacks in the B1, right? But your point about maintenance is valid.
No, but it seems to me like just more...
So your motion is to keep it open until...
September 30th is the submittal date for the applicant's...
Yeah, keep it that same.
Fair to keep it open for that one.
So is it, we close it tonight, but we keep for written comments to the...
So the motion would be to keep the public hearing open until that date for written comment only.
Perfect.
I'm sorry. I'm just going to throw out an idea here. If you make the written comments due a little sooner and you supply them to the applicant, then they also have a response to...
If you give us a couple of days.
Opportunity to respond by the submittal due date.
So that gives one week for additional comment?
Oh, okay.
Well, even the 18th, if we did the 18th, because it's the 8th, we did 10 days, 18th. Then we have till the 30th. Would that be sufficient, 10 days?
That's for these guys to decide.
The submittal, I'm sorry, I just opened up a calendar. You said the submittal is Tuesday, the 30th? And so get it to...
So why don't you make it due the day before? You can have a...
Give it to the 23rd, then... I'm hoping it won't be much, but... Say at least, at least till the 23rd or Wednesday before, you know, give it...
Give it to the 23rd. That's in two weeks.
Yeah, in two weeks. Yeah. Yeah, I agree. Yeah. That gives him a week to respond. You can figure out what... If he needs. Yeah, perfect. I agree.
Okay, so the date is... Good.
Yeah, so the date will be, written comments will be Tuesday, 23rd.
Written comments only.
Chance to respond to that.
Yes.
Yes, written comments only.
I'll second that. All favor? Hi.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Mark.
Mark's the one who made the motion.
Lou's second.
And Amanda, maybe you just want to state for the record, people who want to submit those written comments, where should they send them? They're sending them by email?
Written comments can be emailed to Building Secretary, which is B.L.D.G.S.E.C.Y. at Miller-Japone dot org. Mail, to my memorial avenue, Attention Building Department.
You're going to work on parking spaces? Yes.
Yeah, we can just leave them where they are and just make that permeable paving. Paper blocks or whatever.
You're going to get the cement blocks thrown in the grass?
Yeah, I think that's probably the best route to go, yes.
I think exactly what it is. I see a room for a firework.
But make sure there's a good gravel base.
Sure.
I'm sure we'll want to see it detailed.
Yes.
We'll get you one. All right. We all set?
I am. No, I said upset.
Oh, you okay? I said not yet.
Okay, I thought you did, too. All right, thank you.
Do we have any other business?
We have no other business.
Make the motion to adjourn.
Any second?
Seconds.
All favor?
All right.
All right, thank you, everyone.